Okay, I call the order of this regular scheduled meeting of this 34th City Council for January 23rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Everyone in attendance, can you please put your cellphones on do not disturb as to not disturb the meeting? Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes, here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to turn over the meeting to Councilwoman Leslie Herrick. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Father Bob McCabe of the Church of the Divine Child, who will be giving tonight's invocation. Everyone who is able, please stand and rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Loving God, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the gift of this day. We ask you to be with us as we gather for this city council meeting. May you continue to bless and grant wisdom to all our council members, our mayor, and all elected officials. Please bless everyone who will attend this meeting. We thank you for the gifts and talents that you've given generously to all who lead and serve our Dearborn residents. May we all be good stewards of the gifts entrusted to us. Loving God, we thank you in advance for all that will be accomplished throughout this meeting. Bless us always and bless all we do. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first item?
Item number four, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, acknowledging Phil Maher on his induction into the Michigan Interscholastic Track Coaches Association Hall of Fame and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm going to read into the record and then ask Mr. Maher and the council to come down with me to the front to get a photo and present this citation. But I want to congladurate, glad, I'm sorry, congratulations to Coach PJ Maher on his induction to the Michigan Interscholastic Track Coaches Association Hall of Fame. For over 41 years, he demonstrated exceptional leadership, mentorship, and experience in shaping the lives of countless athletes, as well as winning nine conference titles and finishing among the top 10 teams in the state over five times. Your commitment to fostering the culture of discipline, teamwork, and excellence has left an endewable mark on the sport and the lives of the people that you have coached. We are proud to see someone of this deserving receive this recognition. I, myself, am proud to have called you a coach for myself at Fortson High School. I could tell you, today athletics in the past was, for today's youth, more of the video games. And the athletics was a very big part of life. Coach, you had instilled in many people. I know that we talked earlier and you had credited the athletes, but really, the athletes wanted to credit you because the teaching of not just how can you run, but the teaching of frame, I'm sorry, teamwork, togetherness, and not yourself is a big impact on the youth. And I can't thank you enough. When I seen you winning this, I was very proud and was hoping that you would come here and be able to receive the citation from the council. And from me being one of your student athletes, I wanted to thank you and congratulate you. Thank you. All right, let's have him up in the front here. You got the camera.
I got the camera. It's with the words.
All right, thank you very much for that.
And thank you, Coach. And again, I did want to recognize Councilman Abraham. I apologize if I did not. He was also your coach as well.
Yeah, Coach Maher and I go way back. And part of his first regime at Fortson in cross-country and track, and also coached at his side in the early '90s. We had some stellar athletes that came through the hallways there that I was privileged to be able to coach next to Mr. Maher and enjoy the time we had with the Fortson athletes.
Absolutely, yeah. And I know you did end up going, like most of us, on to Dearborn High for the last few years of your career as well. I know, I had nothing wrong with that. My kids were there too. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, your unanimous roll shall be attached. And, Mr. Clerk, next item?
Item number five is public comments.
Okay, so at this time, the council has reserved 30 minutes of public comment to address issues before the council agenda. Anyone here to speak to the council regarding city business? You may fill out one of these comment cards. We'll take them in order. If you do not fill out a comment card, you please be recognized by myself, come on up and state your name and address. A kind reminder, we have a three-minute limitation, and a 30-second time warning will be given by the clerk. So I do have two cards. One is from Pastor Ron, or Dan, Dan Ratham? Yep, sorry. If you'd like to come forward, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate what all of you do, and we love Dearborn. And I'm pastor at Guardian. We're on the west side. I just wanted to bring up, we have some wonderful members that live on the east side, the Ungars. And just on the houses of worship, I know our neighbors have to put up with us at Guardian from kickballs and things in their yard and where we take their parking spots. So two things, we just try to be a good neighbor. And then, in regards to the noise ordinance, just try to be respectful of our neighbors. So just kind of speaking on behalf, it doesn't affect us on the west side as it does some on the east side, I think because of the mosque that's over on the east side. But being a good neighbor and respecting the noise ordinance, this is all we try to do and hope that all others would do too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor. We do appreciate your comments. Thank you. Okay, unanimous, we have Ms. Andrea Unger.
Thank you. I live at 6401 Ruder. My family has lived in East Dearborn community for over 40 years now. And you can't have unity in your community without you and I. I've listened to council members for months now talking about ordinance enforcement for Camp Dearborn, for the food trucks, for speeding cars down the Dearborn Park roads, for the signage, for parking space, but I haven't heard a change in the enforcement of the noise ordinance. I've spoken with most of you, I've written to you, I've given you a copy of the current noise ordinance. You've indicated that there's been no change made and no permits have been given to ignore the current ordinance. Since April of '23, the Islamic Institute of Knowledge at 6345 Schaefer has been using outdoor loudspeakers to blast a message five minutes long in duration twice every day, sometimes over 76 decibels. I've talked to Officer Saad, I've talked to Sergeant Gracer, I've talked to Renault, I've talked to six different members of the council, I've talked to the mayor's office, I've met, thanks to Councilman El-Sawafi, we've met with Imam Barry at the mosque itself. Each time, I've been told, it will be checked, it will be monitored, it will be enforced, but I don't see a change. I can download an app on my phone that shows me the decibel level, and when I sat out there again yesterday, it's over 76. When I'm at my house a quarter mile away, it's 76. So I'm asking for the council to look at the unity in our diverse community and enforce the ordinance against unreasonably loud noise, which disturbs the quality of our neighbors in our Dearborn residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Unger. I know that, Mayor, if you, or maybe we can have the chief, I know that we have had the Islamic Institute, the one on Schaefer that was the complaint, we did have our officers go out several times, and our understanding that there was one point early on, which they were slightly over the decibel level, and there hasn't been any report back to us that there's been any decibel level violation. In my opinion, in what I've talked, there's been no citations or any violations.
Yeah, correct. We went out there, we had a decibel reader with the staff, they measured it, it was slightly above, they adjusted the speaker system right then and there, and they continually informed us that they have not touched the speaker system. And we go back out, we've gone out several times based on complaints, and so.
Okay, and what is the decibel level requirement? She's saying it's 76. Do we have?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
Not sure exactly, yeah.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
Okay, well, if anyone else hasn't, Councilman El-Sawafi, you had them meet with the mosque. So are they indicating that they're not violating this, or what's this having?
Yeah, that's correct. We had a meeting with the Imam and the rest of the staff. They indicated that the police did come out, they did conduct a measurement, and they were not above, after several times of going out there, they weren't above the decibel within the ordinance, so no violation was written. But they did say they will even bring it down a little bit lower, is what they indicated. And that was the meeting that we had, so.
And the Imam is my next-door neighbor, so I talked to him about this, and he's aware. He said we did bring it down below what's also required, and we don't touch it.
Yeah, so I.
And it's twice a day, so they only do the afternoon and the night prayers.
Right, right. You know, all I can say, Ms. Unger, I know we've talked several times about it, and I made it abundantly clear that the council has not made any changes to any ordinance allowing any carve-out for, to exercise a limit that's exceeding what the council has put in place. So I mean, all we can do is continue to monitor it, and you know, I think the pastor said it best. I mean, me personally, I believe you have to be a good neighbor, no matter what religion or that you go by or what you're doing. It's just common courtesy for your fellow man. So I don't disagree with you, but we continue to monitor it, and I know that you've been to the meetings, and I do appreciate that. But I know that the chief will continue to monitor, and we have neighborhood police officers in those areas. So I think at this time, we just have to continue to monitor it because there's been no violation cited or on record for us. But thank you for bringing it to our attention again. All right, anyone, there's no other cards?
No.
Okay, anyone else would like to address the council regarding city business before we move to the agenda? Okay, Mr. Clerk, we will close the first public comment section, and can we go to the next item of business?
Item number six, resolution in need of offer and support approving all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, it's offered by Councilman Enos and supported by Councilwoman Herrick. And before we move to the consent agenda, are there any items that any members wish to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? Okay, Mr. Clerk, you have the offer and support. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven years the resolution passes.
Thank you, next item, please.
We'll move on now to item number 22 on the agenda, resolution by Councilmembers Enos and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of January 4th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Okay, hearing and seeing done. Your unanimous roll will be attached, next item.
Item number 23, ordinance number 24-1806 introduced by Councilmember Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend the Parks and Recreation Chapter, Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 15-53 entitled Dog Park Use Generally.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The amendments to Section 15-53 are being proposed in line with the new expiration of dog licenses. This will streamline the process for our customers and eliminate the multiple trips to the city. This change will remove the expiration date of the dog license from February 28th to March 31st annually. This is the first of two readings. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 24-1806, an ordinance to amend the Parks and Recreation Chapter, Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 15-53 entitled Dog Park Use Generally. Resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and Enos to table the ordinance.
All right, unanimous, roll will be attached unless hearing the objection. Hearing done, so it's attached. Next item.
Item 24, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and Herrick awarding a two-year competitive contract to CHOP in the amount of $800,184 for the tree trimming services for the Wednesday and Thursday districts and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The tree trimming services have been requested annually within the city districts for trees in the right-of-way, in the city right-of-way. This contract is for the Wednesday and Thursday districts, and is anticipated, the Wednesday district will begin immediately this January and be completed by the spring of 2024. The Thursday district will begin in the winter of 2024 and be completed by the spring of 2025. There are pub, I'm sorry, the Department of Public Works in conjunction with purchasing, the department recommends that the competitive purchase of the tree trimming services to CHOP, there were three bids received, and CHOP was the lowest responsive bid. The awarded contract shall be for two years at the contract's original price in terms and conditions contingent upon a satisfactory performance. The contract will be for a total of $800,184. This contract provides for a safe and efficient trimming and pruning of our city streets located in the right-of-ways, again, on the Wednesday and Thursday public service districts. Immediate effect is being, or immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this? Councilman Hamud?
So I think one thing that we just haven't mentioned is, I think this is an important contract because we're going to be catching up on trimming that hasn't been done in, according to the information here, over seven years. So I think as we continue to build our capacity in DPW internally, I appreciate that. I think the administration is prioritizing tree trimming, which, you know, sounds kind of basic, and especially since we're spending nearly a million dollars on it. But I think people need to understand, there's a lot of safety issues, like trees falling on vehicles or homes if they're dead. And then there's also a matter of even when it comes to infrastructure, I think people underestimate how much trees themselves are actually a big part of power outages. So, you know, I think it's important that people understand that we are spending enormous amounts of money on tree trimming just to catch up on things that haven't been done in nearly a decade. So I really appreciate that you're bringing this item. I think it's part of a wider blitz, right?
Absolutely, thank you. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. You know, this is an important agenda item, and I echo what my fellow colleague made mention of this, but, so even a little bit further, we all know about the ice damage that we've had recently, and we've got some other trees that have fallen. You know, neighborhoods have trees down by the curb or dragged them out to the curb. You know, tree trimming is extremely important, and seven years is a long time. COVID took its toll. Don't confuse the tree trimming with replacing trees or dead trees. They will go on a list, but we're talking about 5,000 trees in both these districts, one in the west end that'll be done coming up this year, followed by the east end, another over 5,000 trees. Now, we have another 500 trees each end of town or thereabouts to go ahead and evaluate and take down that have been on the list for a long period of time. Based on this, because Tree City, you know, that we're known for, it's an important issue. But I'm going to tell you, just from my own personal experience, I've had a number of people contact me over a period of time, and I've seen it myself, and I'd like to call our director up if at all possible, Tim Hawkins from DPW and Facilities, only because I'd like to go over, if at all possible, some of the things that we as residents can do about that particular topic, about bringing trees down. We have people in our neighborhoods that are cutting trees down, and sometimes it seems, allegedly, that they're being done without a permit, they're being done after hours, when there's really no way of looking forward and looking up information to see if, in fact, something has been done, getting a permit. Now, it's my understanding, Director Hawkins, and obviously, you know, I've looked at the ordinance, you know, a number of times because of complaints that I've called in myself to inquire, and then some of my neighbors have too. But, you know, what is the ordinance? Is a permit required first, and do we have to have a approved contractor that has to also be involved in the permitting process before taking a tree down?
Good evening, Council President, Council, Tim Hawkins, Director of Department of Public Works and Facilities. First, we can clear the air, the permit holder for the tree program is actually Economic Community Development. It falls under their purview for the non-city tree permits. And I know a little bit about it because we worked on the ordinance years ago. Even though I don't hold the permit, I can explain it. So any tree that is on private property that is 16 inches in diameter at breast height, about four foot off the ground, requires a permit, and that permit is to be secured at the counter here with Economic Community Development. At that time, the tree will be reviewed, and then we will check to see if you have a licensed contractor, one that holds liability insurance, and then it will be granted and removed.
And is there a requirement, too, that you have to have physical possession of the permit?
All permits require to be posted.
Okay. What I've noticed, too, that on a weekend, as an example, you can drive by and wonder, it used to be, and only in my estimation, maybe things have changed, that you drive by if there's construction on a home, or if a tree is going to be felled, that the permit was actually posted in front of the house, you know, on the door. Is that required anymore?
It's to be in possession. So some job sites, like a new construction home or something like that, or some site prepping potentially for a new home, may have a job site box, which that is also the same. It keeps the permits weather tight. It'd be a plastic box denoted that this secures plans, permits, whatever could be required, it could be posted in a window. You know, I have permits that I have just secured, tacked to a board, and it's leaned up in the inside of my window of my house. So it's supposed to be visible, or at least in a spot that you could assume holds permits.
And just to encourage people to go ahead and get that permit, it's my understanding that there is no cost to that permit, to actually obtain the permit.
It is correct. That would be correct.
Okay. The only other thing that I wanted to make mention, this is being after hours. Is there any way, as an example, a patrol officer, Dearborn PD is getting the calls, or will get the calls if none of the city offices are open after hours or on weekends, holidays. Is there any way of looking up information, or is it available for the police department to look up, in fact, if somebody does have a permit? Sometimes you knock on the door, nobody's there.
I'm not really sure. I wouldn't recommend knocking on people's doors, asking for permits as residents or citizens.
No, 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 I'm not asking, even insinuating that.
Because I wouldn't advocate for that. But you can always just take a photo of it, and then when operating hours of the city are, you could send the inquiry to Economic Community Development. That is much safer. If you're driving by, don't believe it, take a photo and just email it to our department, but, you know.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to clarify, too, because we got off on another tangent, which I've been trying to stop that since I've been the council president. So I do appreciate you trying to answer the question. This contract is for tree trimming.
City trees.
City trees. Now, we're talking about a tree on your personal property.
That's where we went.
Okay, so I just want to make sure. And then, Councilman Paris, did you, you wanted to ask the police, do you want to ask the police chief if he has police officers to drive around to see if the tree permits are hanging in the tree?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, if there was a, I'm leading to that police department is usually the department that would be called to go ahead and see if, in fact, there is a permit for a tree that needs to be felled.
Well, I'm not so sure if that's the case. Economic development, I think these are separate fractions.
Now, it's a misdemeanor.
So, yeah, let's see with the chief, I don't know, chief, if you can, just please, if you could, say your name, and then we'll get into the question.
Good evening, Issa Shaheen, Chief of Police.
So, chief, in your tenure, I mean, is that, is that your department's responsibility to enforce tree permits on personal property?
Our police, Council President, our police officers are familiar with the ordinance. We reflast it for their benefit. Oftentimes, people, if they don't have a permit, will wait for after-hours on the weekend to cut down trees. So our officers will document it, photograph it, and get the information, and ask them to stop trimming if they don't have a permit, so then the appropriate department can follow up on Monday.
Okay, and is your opinion that's been happening?
It happens, but not with, not with great frequency.
Okay. All right, so I, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure, if there is a specific situation, thank you, Director Hawkins, for taking on this aspect. Of course, I know it's on your department, but in the past it was, so we appreciate your knowledge. But, Councilman Paris, I think we have the process. If there is something that one of us noticed, we are fully, what can I say? Mr. Romer, we have the right to go ahead and send the email to with the address and let them look into it and see where it's at. But just keep in mind, this is on personal property, and there is no cost. And I didn't know that we required them to provide liability insurance on their own property for their taking down the tree, because I know that a lot of homeowners take them down themselves.
A contractor is required liability insurance, so if you hire a licensed contractor.
Of course.
They are required, and the.
But a homeowner is not?
I'm not sure.
Hi, Mr. Romer, do you know on that? Because since we opened this can.
No, that's not. I took down my own tree.
You can't, you can't tell somebody the tree on his own house, he has to get his own insurance. I mean, I know, but this is the stuff that spirals, and is, we need to stay focused on it. I mean, we're talking about property rights of people's homes and not the tree. This here before us is a contract to trim the trees, which we need to do, and personal property rights are totally different. So I just want to make sure we keep it, I don't want someone to think that if they're going to cut their own tree down, that they got to go get liability insurance.
No.
No.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
If I can, in closing to this, the absolute reason why I'm bringing this up is because we're talking about tree trimming. It is an issue of concern. I've had complaints about this recently. I've seen it myself and have reported it also. This is an opportune time to bring up the subject about cutting down trees. I totally agree with personal property rights. That's not in question whatsoever. My question is, or my comments are, to make the public aware, after-hours, on weekends, nobody is around, that they are still required to have a permit, simply put.
Absolutely. But those ones that you did bring up, did you, have they been reported? Because I'd like to.
Yes, they have.
Okay, so I don't know who we can get this from, because I don't think it's from your department, chief. But, Mr. Romer, can we get from Economic Development, the call isn't how many violations there's been of trees being taken on personal property in violation of the ordinance? Because I'd like to find, because to me, you know, I do like to make the public aware, but I also like to get things done. So if there's been people that are chopping trees down and not having permits, then I'd like to know how many there is. And I'd like to know where, what the situation is so we can find a better way to curtail this. So, Mr. Romer, if you could see with Economic Development, and Jack, if you could note that down.
Can you just refer it to them? Because that's all I would be, I'd just.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, whatever you think is best. So we'll just refer to Economic Development to see personal property trees, how many permits have been, have been placed in 2023. We'll use that as a benchmark, and how many were found, and how many people were cited for failure to get a permit. Is that good, Mr. Romer? Stated enough for you?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hawkins. All right, Councilman Paris? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Herrick. Councilman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate Councilmember Paris for bringing up the issue of, and reminding residents that they need a permit if they're going to cut a tree down on their own property. This is, it can be a difficult balance between private property rights or personal property rights, and, you know, what you're doing that will, could impact the community around you. And that's why we require permits for, as Mr. Hawkins pointed out, if your tree is 16 inches in diameter or greater at chest height. But I just wanted to note that on the screen, the maps were provided for the districts that this contract for trimming city trees on the easements is pertaining to. And if you have a tree and you're not in one of those districts, and it needs trimming because it's dangerous and there's a limb about to come down, definitely call the city, whether or not you're in those districts, and the city will put you on list to get your tree trimmed as soon as possible. So across the city, we're trimming trees all year long as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, and your unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 25, resolution by Councilmembers El-Sawafi and Herrick authorizing a cooperative contract purchase from Lunghammer Ford through the State of Michigan Extended Purchasing Program and McComb Contract Alternate in the amount of $457,660 for the purchase of 10 2024 Ford police interceptors for the police department and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Purchasing on behalf of the police department recommends a cooperative contract purchase of 10 model-year 2024 utility interceptor vehicles from Lunghammer Ford. The new.
I appreciate Councilmember Pierce for bringing up the issue of, and reminding residents that they need a permit if they're going to cut a tree down on their own property. This is, it can be a difficult balance between private property rights or personal property rights and, you know, what you're doing that will, could impact the community around you. And that's why we require permits for, as Mr. Hawkins pointed out, if your tree is 16 inches in diameter or greater at chest height. But I just wanted to note that on the screen, the maps were provided for the districts that this contract for trimming city trees on the easements is pertaining to. And if you have a tree and you're not in one of those districts and it needs trimming because it's dangerous and, and there's a limb about to come down, definitely call the city, whether or not you're in those districts, and the city will put you on list to get you, your tree trimmed as soon as possible. So, across the city, we're trimming trees all year long as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, and a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 25, resolution by Councilmembers Elsoafi and Herrick, authorizing a cooperative contract purchase from Lunghammer Ford through the State of Michigan Extended Purchasing Program and McComb Contract Alternate in the amount of $457,660 for the purchase of 10 2024 Ford Police Interceptors for the Police Department and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Purchasing on behalf of the Police Department recommends a cooperative contract purchase of 10 model-year 2024 utility interceptor vehicles from Lunghammer Ford. The new Ford Police Interceptor Utilities will replace 10 of our current interceptors that are marked in the fleet and have excess of 100,000 miles, which is the industry standard to keep and maintain and patrol. The requested amount is $457,666, and immediate effect is being requested for the lead time of these vehicles to be, to be produced. Any questions or comments? Councilman Elsoafi?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the chief and administration for bringing this forward. This is over 10 vehicles for the Police Department. These are much needed, in my opinion, much needed for the safety of our officers, the retention of our officers, and giving them the tools to do the job that we ask them to do. So, I just really appreciate this coming forward, and I'm looking forward to seeing these being introduced to the fleet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing is seen and un, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item, please.
Item number 26, resolution by Councilmembers Elsoafi and Herrick, authorizing a cooperative contract purchase from Lunghammer Ford through the State of Michigan Extended Purchasing Program and McComb Contract Alternate in the amount of $87,315 for the purchase of two Ford Surveillance Vehicles for the Police Department and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Based on the nature of the surveillance activity and it's necessary to obtain new vehicles on a regular basis to maintain anonymity, two Ford vehicles from Lunghammer Ford are being requested to be purchased. These vehicles will replace units that are outlived their expected useful life and are becoming expensive to maintain. The amount of the request is $87,315. It is requested that council authorize the purchase of these two vehicles with immediate effect for the lead time for the purchase of these vehicles. Any questions or comments on these? Hearing is seen and un, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 27, resolution by Councilmembers Pierce and Enos, authorizing a cooperative contract purchase from Kodiak Emergency Vehicles through the HGAC Buy Cooperative Program in the amount of $2,699,552 for the purchase of eight Braun Liberty Type 1 ambulances for the Fire Department and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Fire Department is requesting funding to replace eight ambulances, which are up for fiscal year 2025. This is for the full eight fleet that we have in stock. This request is to, is an early approval to, into a contract for the ambulance. Bills, bills are expected to have extended weighted, bill times that are going to take over two and a half years. All existing ambulance will be past their useful life at the, and mileage at the recommended intervals by emergency vehicles at the time that the new ambulance will arrive, ambulances will arrive. The Fire Department, in conjunction with purchasing, recommends the purchase of a cooperative contract through Braun Liberty Type 1 ambulances on Ford 550 chassis from Kodiak Emergency Vehicles. The requested amount on the purchase is $2,699,522, and this approval is, is asking for a balance to be paid of $2,429,567 once the vehicles are received in approximately 30 months. It is requested that council authorize the purchase in immediate effect due to the, again, the extended times it'll take and the mandatory vehicle change. Mr., I'm sorry, chief, can you come forward on that? I know there was a lot of questions, and I appreciate the mayor also having this information available at the mayor's briefing. Chief, if you want to go ahead and speak.
Sure. Fire Chief Murray, I have with me today my Assistant Chief Mike Weinberger, is our Support Services Chief, and our Apparats Supervisor, Captain Rudy Cervantes, who did a lot of the research on this. So, our, our ambulances are up for next fiscal year, that's our regular replacement cycle. But because the bills right now are in excess of two and a half to three years, we're trying to order them early so we can get them rolling. We generally try to replace our ambulances on a five-year cycle, so this is going to put us out till about eight years until we actually receive these. So, the ambulance, we're going with the same ambulance that we, we currently have. These are new to us, the last cycle. We really like them, they're very well-built, quality ambulance, we have very little problems with them, good responsiveness from the vendor, so we are just essentially buying a new set of them as their cycle. Right around five years, they start hitting about 100,000 miles, which is when we want, we like to replace them. So, what we're asking for is for 10% down for right now, so we can get them on order so they can start them in the building process, and then that balance will be paid in probably fiscal year '27, I believe, when we, when we actually receive them.
Well, chief, thank you, and I appreciate the information you gave also to the community and the whole, but just for the taxpayers to know too, this is happening, if I'm correct from what you were stating too, is because of the grant bridge environment and the ARPA dollars, so many ambulances are being replaced around the same time. Is that your, your estimated?
Yeah, so we kind of hit a perfect storm here. So, we have, we had supply chain issues, first of all, it was delaying all the, you know, extending the, the li, the bill times.
Yes.
And then you had millions and millions of dollars, the ARPA dollars got pumped in, so you have a lot of these cities in Michigan that are buying, ambulances, buying fire trucks right now. So, the line is getting longer and longer. So, that's why we want to, we want to get them in now, because it's going to take three years to build them. When we built the first, the first set of these, it was a nine-month build, and now it's three years, so. And the costs are going up, like, to sign it, to get a contract going now, I mean, I think in the last year, it went up 15, the cost went up 15% last year, and the last, since 2020, the, the cost went up 47%.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the metal, steel, everything's at a premium now, so getting this going now is going to save us a lot of money down, down the road as well.
Well, I do appreciate your forecasting for this, and I did have, as you know, I was very active on this situation in the past because we had all these diesel engines on there, so. And I know that we had a commitment to go gas. These eight are all gas, correct?
Yes, so they will be replaced in the last.
So, that will complete our fleet, will no longer, because we were having issues with the idling and runtime.
Yeah.
We didn't have kits to keep the idling and the diesels, and to replace a diesel engine at 100,000 miles made no sense.
Yeah.
That's when it breaks in. So, what was happening is we were spending more money for diesel, I recognized that my first term on the council, and I know we changed many of them, but now we're fully gas, there's no more diesel engines.
With, with this purchase, we'll have all gas.
All of them.
Yeah. We've been having a lot of problems, not just the ambulance, fire engines too, with those DEF systems, they're, they're constantly having problems, and it's, it's across all manufacturers, not just ours. So, we're, we much prefer, we have, right now, we have four diesel and four gas, we love the gas. So, we're planning to go all gas, and with the new LED lights and stuff, the diesel, I mean, the idling is not as big of an issue anymore.
And then for my colleagues and for some people that have visited some of the workshops or stuff that we do at the police sta, at the fire station, these, these boxes are superior.
Yeah.
And I know that in the past, supplier, we had a lot of time, the, the boxes would go bad, the hinges would break, doors would fall. These things are built extremely well-made, and I know that's, it's, it's like you said, it's one of the few things, we don't have any complaints on it, on the fire trucks are, fire ambulance are in a superior condition, so that's why they're in demand. So, I do appreciate you bringing it forward this in advance, I do understand that, and I just wanted to bring that to light. I think you're right, with the ARPA dollars and the federal money that's been pumped into a lot of communities, there's a lot of people that are ordering these, and we appreciate that you're coming ahead, so we, we won't be too far behind. Any questions for the chief or anyone on these ambulances? All right, thank you, chief, so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Clerk, unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item number 28, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Elsoafi, awarding a sole-source contract to Red Guard Fire and Security in the amount of $91,887 for the design and installation of a fire alarm system at the Dearborn Ice Skating Center and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the existing fire alarm at the, at the DISC is over 25 years old and is in need of replacement. Parts are no longer available and the system isn't compliant with today's fire code. The fire alarm system will provide an increased level of security for our visitors and staff at the Dearborn Ice Skating Center. The Parks and Recreation Department, in conjunction with the purchasing, recommends an award of a contract to Red Guard Fire and Security for the design and installation of a fire alarm system at the DISC. The requested amount is $91,887 with immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing is seen and un, a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 29, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Pierce, authorizing a sole-source contract purchase from McQueen Emergency Group in the amount of $64,130.77 for the purchase of six sets of HERS Strong Arm Kits for the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Fire Department is seeking to purchase six sets of HERS Strong Arm and Spreader Kits from McQueen Emergency Group. This equipment is more commonly known as the Jaws of Life hydraulic rescue tools that are being used to execute, execute patients from entangled situations due to vehicle collision or heavy machinery equipment. This purchase will replace the existing Jaws of Life, which are surpass its expected life, their life service, service life. Purchasing on behalf of the Fire Department recommends the sole-source purchase of six of the Jaws of Life from McQueen Emergency Group is, is the distributor of the HERS Strong Arm Kits that match the existing tools that the Fire, the Dearborn Fire Department uses at this time. The requested amount is $64,130.77. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 30, resolution by Councilmembers Abraham and Enos, authorizing the Finance Director to reallocate funds in the amount of $428,607 from the remaining 2023 Dearborn Homecoming Festival to the 2024 Homecoming Festival, Project Z77642, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The 2023 Dearborn Homecoming has had budgeted surplus in the amount that is being requested to be reallocated to the 2024 Dearborn Homecoming Festival, Project Z77642. In order to move forward, the festival is planning to secure top-tier talent and resources. It is necessary to begin seeking vendors as early as possible. This requires advanced funding so that the purchase is not delayed and the desired talent and vendors do not become unavailable. Donors and sponsorship funds are being, are currently being sought after to support the 2024 festival. The receipt of these funds allow for booking and paying of vendors as needed as part of the planning process. It is requested the Finance Director to be authorized to reallocate the funding from the 2023 project totaling $428,607 to Project Z7742 to allow preparations for the festival to begin, to begin promptly, and immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing is seen and un, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Nothing further from the clerk's office, thank you.
All right, great. For me, I just had a couple things before I opened to my colleagues, I just want to recognize, I know, chief, we had the police chief here, but I wanted to recognize, I did see, I do watch some of your social media, so I did, I did see Sergeant Jeff Barta, is that how you pronounce it, retired from the Police Department after 30 years of service, and I thought that was tremendous, 22 years of which he served here in the city of Dearborn, and he had, had held many special assignments in his career, and I wanted to thank him for his years of service and wish him the best of luck in his future, so please pass that on from the council to him. It's a, it's a sad day when you lose some of these officers, but they have paid their, their dues and their times, and it's nice to be recognized for what they've done. So, I just wanted to thank Sergeant Jeff Barta. And then for myself, I didn't have anything much, except I wanted to remind everybody that the Lions will be playing in San Francisco this Sunday. I am fortunate to be there with my three sons to watch.
Awesome.
Season ticket holder, I've been since '98, and it's a tremendous feeling, I'll tell you, the crowd downtown and the people and the cor, the way it's been coming together has been, is a great thing. It's, has a lot to do with, like we said, the teamwork and the culture, moving forward together and respecting everybody around you. So, those of you that are rooting for anybody else, I wish you the best of luck.
You'll need it.
You're going to need it, that's right. Go Lions.
That's right, thank you.
To my colleagues, open up for anybody who has any comments on the colleagues. All right. At this time, mayor, administration, anything from yourself?
Just want to thank Councilman Serini for considering me his fourth son, that he's going to take with him to San Francisco for the Lions game. It's going to be an exciting time, excited to be there. No, in full sincerity, it's, it's, we have an exciting year ahead of us, and just excited to be working with council, so.
Thank you, mayor, appreciate it. Anything, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, real quickly, we've sent out 15,000 absentee voter applications, we've received about 2,000 back already.
Clerk.
We're sending out ballots, probably about 500 or so have been sent out already, so we're just getting prepared for the February election. We've done some videos, three or four videos that have been shown on CCTV and other places on Facebook and Instagram, letting people know about early voting and how to properly fill out the AV ballot, so, or the AV application, rather, so. A lot of work ahead of us, but we're ready to do it and excited about this election in February.
Well, thank you very much. I know we're going to be making sure that the residents know each week, so we do appreciate it. It's something new and a lot of work that you're undertaking in your department, so I know that you have, we have budgeted and hopefully that you have everything that you need. It's going to be challenging, Mr. Clerk, but, you know, hopefully this will do what it's meant to do, bring more people to vote, so.
Yeah, that's the goal.
That's the goal, and you can still vote on, on election day, because it's getting to the point, I think Councilman Pierce brought that up, I thought it was great.
Yeah.
I mean, can you still vote on election day? I guess you can.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I like to go, I like to go there and put it in the machine myself, but it does, it does have benefits to make it more accessible for many, so.
Council President.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Councilman Abraham?
And I just want to direct this to City Clerk Dereny. A lot of people may not know that with the primary election, of course, you have to designate a party for the presidential side of it, but we have a local ballot question, and maybe you could shed some light for those folks that maybe are choosing not to vote in the presidential primary election, how can they voice their opinion on the local mileage question that is going to be on the ballot?
Yeah, very good question, thank you for bringing that up, because we hear that a lot about some people that are not interested in voting for a presidential's choice in the presidential primary, but there is a third choice, so you can, you can ask for a Democratic ballot, you can ask for a Republican ballot, or you can ask for a non-presidential ballot, and that will have the two questions, the two ballot questions on. All three ballots will have both the college question, ballot question, and the school mileage question on it.
Thank you for that. I know there's, there's, I don't know if there's confusion, but I think there's a lack of understanding that that option does exist, and maybe a little bit of a secret out there that, that is an option that's available, and I strongly, and I'm speaking personally now, I strongly recommend that for those of you that may be disenchanted with the presidential primary, to please voice your opinion by grabbing, and deciding to vote and grabbing the local election nonpartisan ballot, and make your voice heard that way.
Yeah, we've mentioned that also in our video too, make sure that people get that message.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Councilman Abraham, I know we spoke before on that, I was unaware that there was a third ballot. You know, so many times, we're used to taking one side or the other in the primary, so I do appreciate, that's a very good point, and I, and thank you, Clerk Dereny, for all your work that you're doing to try to make sure that voice gets put out to the residents. Okay, Mr. Clerk, the next item would be the public comment, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, this time we have a public comment to the council. Again, anyone here to voice their opinions, there's public comment cards, you may also step up to the podium, state your name and address to the record regarding city business. Please step forward, and just kind reminder, there's a three-minute limitation, and the